I'd like to call this meeting to order with the board of supervisors.
Evan?
Here.
Caladonia?
Here.
Canisius?
Here.
Geneseo?
Here.
Groveland?
Here.
Lester? Lima?
Here.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Here.
North Anvil?
Here.
Nande?
Here.
Ashen?
Here.
Portage?
Here.
Sparta?
Here.
Springwater?
Here.
West Sparta?
Here.
Jordan?
Ian, please, we have a veteran to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you Chairman. The veteran for today's pledge of allegiance is Sergeant Darren John Hamilton. Darren was born in Acadia. He served in the United States Air Force from March 6, 1987 until was out of the discharge on March 6, 1991. Darren earned his associates of Applied Science, Security and Administrative Management from the Community College of the Air Force, associates in Science and Business Administration at Geneseo Community College, and his Bachelor of Arts in Human Resource Administration from St. Leo University. Darren completed his higher education with a Master's of Science in Personnel and Counseling from Troy University. While in the Air Force, Sergeant Hamilton completed his basic training at Lockland Air Force Base in Texas and Technical Training School at an Administration Specialist at Keesler Air Force Base in the United States. During training, his duty station was with the 268th National Defense Corps Air Force Base in Florida where he served from the start of the first Gulf War until was discharged. For his military service, Sergeant Hamilton received the Air Force Meritorious Service Medal, Air Force Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Non-Commissioned Officer for Credit Union Credit Union Redden, Air Force Longevity Service Award, and the Air Force Training Medal. Upon completion of military service and education, Darren has worked in talent acquisition and human resources with three different companies. He worked with First Federal Savings and Associates of Rochester, spent 14 years with TAP personnel, and the last 12 years with Five Star Bank. Darren is now proud to serve our veterans community as the new Veteran Service Officer at Livingston County Veteran Service Agency, started last week. Darren is always with Coach LaGuardia High School Football as an assistant coach for the last four years, and has coached youth sports to improve baseball, basketball, and football for the last 20 plus years. In addition, he volunteered for past events with the Geneseo Lordy Club. Darren is a wife of 35 years, Janice lives in Geneseo, can follow Livingston County their home. They have two sons, Joshua attending GCC and Jacob attending SWI Geneseo. Darren, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Darren, for your service in the United States Air Force and board of supervisors, please present me with the certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
If some meeting missed from our last regular meeting, the 26th of April, for your consideration, does anyone have any changes they, Darren, couldn't follow with this time? Period none, I would for a motion in a second, please?
That's good.
Hands up. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. I oppose. Not all those in security, we do have an abstract complaint, this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at this abstract complaint, and ask for you to answer it.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. Is there any questions or discussion on this abstract complaint? Period none, I will please Michelle?
Evan?
Aye.
Caladonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester? Lima?
Aye.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Aye.
North Anvil?
Aye.
Nande?
Aye.
Ashen? Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
Jordan? Eyes 4265, absent 789, adopted.
We have some privileges to the floor. Mr. Chairman, I request privileges on the floor for Bill Bacon, Livingston County Economic Development Week presentation.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for this time on the agenda. It is economic development week, and it's also traveling tourism week, and it's no coincidence that these celebrations overlap because you simply cannot have one without having the other. It was with this exact understanding that you made the decision to bring the tourism program in-house to work side by side with economic development. Our team is more active than visible in our communities than ever before. Public art, outdoor recreation, live music, festival events, food and beverage, we're making investments in the quality of life for living back home visitors and residents alike. I'm sure you recognize some of the things I was through. Perhaps they become a part of their everyday life, like they had mine. Morning cup of coffee, concert with friends, each of them a great place to take a family when they're in town. Can you imagine Livingston County without these places? What a difference five years can make. But these aren't the only businesses that we've assisted. It's the work done through the Industrial Development Agency that helps to fund much of these quality of life improvements. And without these quality of life improvements, we wouldn't be able to attract a workforce which makes Livingston County an attractive location for future business development. Last year alone, we worked with different businesses, on average, every other day. We provided over $3.5 million in grant funding, that's $9,500 a day. We painted over 16,000 square feet of murals, and we were even featured on the online series Places to Love on PBS. The partnership between economic development and tourism is taking us to the next level. Last year's Hump Long LivCo Walls Festival is just one example of the work of these teams together and delivered. Let me show you what I did.
This mural festival that we're doing right now is really pushing the envelope on our communities. This is art on a scale they are not used to. This is really an innovative thing. It's the first mural festival in New York State that's one county, nine villages, so we're pretty proud of that. Public artwork is an essential building block in economic development and quality of place. And so this is a really nice way for the Grow LivCo arm and the tourism arm of Livingston County to come together and work towards that end.
Public art is helpful in that it interrupts the normalcy, causes us to stop and think, what is that there for? Is that a moment of beauty, something that challenges us to think differently? But it is a necessary interruption to the sort of day in, day out patterns of our lives.
I think it's this idea of fine art that is accessible, to have something so large and so beautiful and so well executed, something that you can interact with, that you can go up and touch or stand in front of. Most people don't get to experience art in that way in their day to day life, and I think murals bring art down earth.
I really like painting these small cities, and I really believe in the power of all this street art in these small cities, how this can change it. I get excited, and that's how everything starts.
We're making such an impact here in Livingston County. I've participated in quite a few mural festivals before, but this one is special because it's countywide, so every mural is in a different town, and so there's like a different flavor to each one, and there's a lot more programming, and folks are really excited about it, and they ask really poignant questions, and it's just a little bit more involved than, say, your typical mural festival in Waikiki, Honolulu, or somewhere that it's sort of, people are just used to seeing it.
You go to Brooklyn and New York, you can drive a mile down the street, and you could see 10 or 12 different artists painting murals, because art is always happening. People are, they're used to it, and they put their blinders on. But in towns like this, people can't help but stop and notice because it's a new thing. They get a little bit more of a raw excitement, which is really cool.
We knew that we wanted to foster local talent as much as we wanted to bring in internationally renowned artists. So we created the LivCo Walls Apprentice Program and allowed for local artists to apply to participate as helpers and assistants to the muralists. A big reason why we do this is so that the local talent goes away with a new skill set, possibly building on the experience they've had. They move on to do their own murals or other public art within the community. So we knew that that program in itself would be a catalyst for more public art in Livingston County.
I definitely enjoyed working with apprentices a lot, whether they be art teachers, or local artists, or students, it's a variety of people, and it's great to get them involved, and then they can learn how to make murals on their own from a little bit of this.
Each community is learning something new about their town. So they've come together to talk about their history and what's important to them, and then the artists have presented a vision back to them. And now that art is on their wall, and so it's telling a story about that community. And, and the people in the community are learning that story and learning how to talk about it through the art.
I think it's important that these murals do extend and reflect a community's character. I'll paint it, I'll design it, but I'll, I'll go back to my community, and so it's like, this is the room they live in, it needs to reflect the things that are important to them.
It's amazing, again, like how communal everybody is and how proud people are. Everybody's on the same page, and everybody carries, kind of carries this responsibility that we all gotta, you know, put in to make this happen, and it shows, it shows the unity of Livingston County.
I think public art is important because the impact that it can create, like with just a regular person. You can have a bad day, you see some artwork, you see some color, you know, to take you up to the next level, you know, uplift your life, like put a smile on your face and stuff like that.
Like, public art's most special when it's something like this, when the community, in this case the county, decided to put up nine murals and get people to gather around. Yeah, I mean, it says that they appreciate the arts and that it's a cool place to live, and it's gonna be even cooler now.
I want to say thank you all the people who was part of this festival, and all people who stopped by and said their appreciation.
Working in a small town has been really rewarding because I feel like I can get to know everybody that's working on the project. They've welcomed me into their community, and it's really like, you can fall in love with like an entire community in a week, and it's, they're like love bombing you, and I think it's just really special.
LivCo Walls puts Livingston County on the map as a destination for public art, for creatives of all kinds, for people who enjoy arts and culture in all forms.
Now, as we look to the future, the question becomes what's next? Over the course of the next few slides, you'll see several upcoming dates which have been compiled on this one feature that we left on your desk. We're currently working on our next strategic plan for economic development and tourism, mapping out the next five years. I would encourage you all to participate in at least one of the upcoming focus groups of supervisors and mayors, where you will have the opportunity to share your community's needs and visions. You should all receive Zoom links via email to attend these meetings being held on May 17th from 6:30 to 7:30 PM, and May 18th from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Next year, we completed a countywide wayfinding strategy that was implemented to improve both vehicular and pedestrian navigation throughout the town, visually connecting our communities to a uniform and consistent signage, and promoting tourism, recreation, and economic development. We learned late last week that we've been led to apply to the NVRRC Catalyst Program, and if awarded, this funding could begin implementation of this work in our headless traffic areas along the I-390 border. Our business plan competitions have helped friendly businesses to start and grow in Livingston County. These businesses have built vacant buildings, created a draw on our communities, and improved quality of life for locals, creating over 100 jobs. We've received $500,000 from some of the super's office to run our next round of trade debate, so that we can keep an eye out for announcements in the upcoming months. If you haven't already heard, Livingston County is in the path of catastrophe for the total solar eclipse on Monday, April 8, 2024, and this is a big deal. The last total solar eclipse in Livingston County was in 1925. The transmarcials were the only local supervisors who were grateful. That will be another until 2144, so it's safe to say that this is a once in a lifetime event for most of us in this town. The small city of Sweetwater, Geneseo, population 5,700, welcomed 50,000 people for the 2017 eclipse. Representatives from Sweetwater are coming here to Livingston County to share their experiences and some tips in preparing for this event. I strongly encourage you to attend one of these presentations. This isn't just about tourism, it's also important for you to know and to understand the potential strain that could be placed on public resources during this event, including police, traffic control, and emergency services. We cannot be unprepared for this, so planning is critical. Remember that we would think people would travel to the metro areas, however, healing is enhanced where ambient life does not exist, so Livingston County is your dark sky destination. Believe it or not, global mobility is already becoming limited for this date. This requires that we are diligent about staying ahead of it and continue to do that in our planning numbers. We've had significant interest from a few different community groups in our Main Street LLC model that has been used successfully in Village of Perry to rehabilitate several downtown buildings. On June 12th, we will be hosting Rick Hauser of Inside Architecture to share more detail on how this replicable model can be set up and help in the revitalization of your community from grass roots level. This model asks people to put their money where their houses by inspiring residents to invest in their own community. It spreads the risk to making large rehabilitation projects possible while scoring further investment on communities. Iron 12 Distillery has been working with the New York State to bring the festival to, to bring a festival to the region that highlights the rich paper history of the Pickle East. When we heard that this would be a celebration of harvest season featuring live music, craft proven beverages, and local vendors, we moved to Livingston County to be the ideal location. We proactively chased this and moved through the competitive process to ultimately be salable for communities like Geneva and different. The inaugural Hoo Chanai Brewing Festival will take place in the village of Geneseo on the weekend of October 20th and 21st, this fall of 2023. Festival organizers are expected to be burning around 4,000 fans to a significant economic impact to the region. Now, as you all know, the work that gets done in the Economic Development Office does not happen through the efforts of one. It takes a team, pulling in the same direction of working toward a common goal. The energy, efforts, positive attitude, ambition of these individuals, and our board of directors, you, and our board of supervisors, are to be commended for the support and initiative taken to improve this county's quality of life. I want to take a moment and ask each of the speakers that have interviewed, Deputy Director Waring Taylor, Downtown Coordinator Louise Bosworth, Economic Development Specialist Nolan Downey, Economic Development Assistant Jennifer Clark, and our newest Division Director of Tours Mary Burns. We remain committed to the growth and prosperity of Livingston County, and we will be available for you whenever needed. Thank you very much.
We do have a second privilege to the floor this afternoon also. Chairman, I request privileges on the floor for Anna Colochak from Livingston County Construction, the faculty of the museum. Thank you, Mr. Downey.
That's a hard act, Ellen. I want to also applaud the LivCo team. We are just one part of tourism in your county. They've done, they've made and done, I didn't know they were presenting before me, but I'm so grateful that I was able to see that. My name's Donna Walchuk, I'm the Livingston County Museum Administrator for the Livingston County Museum located at 30 Center Street, just one building up from the church and the Watson Library. Our mission, we're an educational institution whose purpose is to present, promote, preserve, and value the rich history of Livingston County via its collections, programming, and partnerships. I have been at this institution since 2008, we came in at the same time, but this building has been in existence since 1838. Various building configurations, used to be a schoolhouse and now a museum. And what I thank you for this opportunity, just to give a little few highlights of what we've been doing and where we're going. We couldn't do this without the support of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors. Our board, which I dare say is a fun board, you know, people don't always know that boards can, can be really active and fabulous, they're terrific. Our community is with us, we've got members and donors that keep growing, our volunteers are fabulous, in fact, we've had so many this year, got to come open an extra day, so that's really a big boost for us, and when we surveyed our audience, they said Saturdays would be a nice day. So lots of positive people and tourism, there's an extra day over the weekend, but we can support tourism in the, in the area. And today was my last day for interns, and they are invaluable, I wish I could clone them, I keep them. So our first phase building project, if you've been with me for, for a decade, you've heard me talking about it, we actually did it, and we did a ribbon cutting, sort of a little pandemic. We now have accessible building access with a ramp, new accessible restrooms, heating, ventilation, air conditioning in parts of the building that were not formally air conditioned, and it's just a breath of fresh air as you come in, it keeps its historic integrity, but it's definitely coming to the 21st century. Now we're talking about phase two, so this is gonna take a little bit of time as well. This image that you see here is gonna be tweaked, we're working with the State Store Preservation Office, and we need to make some changes because we want to make sure that Shibo is happy with us, along with meeting the needs of the project. What we'll be doing is, you can see that kind of gray flow cart, currently there is no exhibit flow in the museum, you go in, you enter the back, you turn around, and you come back to the front. We want everybody to be able to know where they're going, have a circulation exhibit flow, you know, maybe in the day shop, like you do when you go to other museums. And in that process, you can see the parts top, part of that side would be storage, there is no proper storage, schoolhouses didn't need storage rooms, right, in this case, so that's a piece that's really missing for institutions to be sustainable, to grow, and then also we'll be providing HVAC in those places that didn't have it before, that did not address in phase two. Look at that number. I knew Ian was gonna ask me that question if I didn't answer it first. We know that's a big number, these are all the things we've been doing, we just applied through New York State Council on the Arts for half of that. And we're also looking through Mr. True Museum and Library Services, as well as other grants, and we have a private donor that we're working with as well as our Capitol campaign. When I did this slide, because I was supposed to present last month, we had our fingers crossed for this grant, and we did not receive it. So we took a moment and thought, oh, how's this gonna happen? We did have a call with the New York State Council on the Arts, realized, you know, how we could improve the grant project, it was completely sound, there was a budget piece and maybe some contractor estimates, easy fixes that we have a year to do, and they encouraged us to resubmit in 2024. So we feel better about it at first, we're disheartened, in the meantime, we'll just keep working on our designs, having a stronger project with construction documents in place, and having Shibo's approval set in place. So it may be actually a little bit of a blessing that gives us an extra year to do it right. And all of this that we've done has been with a group of consultants, a conservator, a museum space planner from Canada, so when we have our estimates, we look at our collections, we know exactly how much cubic footage you need, you don't want to read this, it's not exciting, but we do know on this place, okay? And we created a timeline, which is probably gonna now just be postponed by a year, but it's, it's the planning that you don't see that we're doing, you know, right now, to make that phase two happen. In that process, we still have lots of work to do, there's never a shortage, we're really looking at collections, we looked at the thought, are there things in our collection that actually don't belong in our collection? Why don't we pay to store them if they're not supposed to be here? That doesn't mean we're getting rid of collections that are really vital to the history and vision of the institution and the county, but we're starting to box things up, starting to work on those construction documents to get ready. So we're finally really having a stronger opening as well, you know, the pandemic has really shifted museums, fortunately, pretty, you know, we weren't hit like many museums were, and so the other side that's happened for us is that the New York State Council on the Arts really is trying to get people back into museums that were not going into indoor spaces. So there's money out there that we've been able to tap in as a result of that, so it's kind of the lemonade side there. So we're able to, you know, just a $5,000 marketing grant, while that may not be huge, it just allows us to let people know we're here and open. So we finally, we've reached out that normal professional, trying to get a social media component, in some magazines, you all have a brochure on your desk there that we want to put in places that, you know, the, another 5,000, another 500, another thousand, and get that word out beyond Livingston County, bring the tourism into our institution, then all the rest of the places that LivCo is doing. One of the most exciting pieces is the piece that we're planning for in the salt mine. So concurrent with trying to plan that new space, we're also planning for a salt mining exhibit, and we're doing it by kind of a textbook way, we're having stakeholder meetings, which we completed, one is with teachers and historical societies, and tourism, and people that would be representatives legislators, you know, we're talking about this new salt mine exhibit, and one done well with enough space, what needs to be in there, what stories do we need to tell? And then we also met, which maybe was a little more fun, I'm not sure, at the RDL with salt miners retired and current salt miners, with our museum consultants and leading the conversation, and we really were able to target themes, must haves, and zig zigots, and we've been working with museum consultants to help us with that, and last week I had the incredible pleasure, maybe some would disagree, that to go down to the mine with Joe Bucie and a board member, Justin Curley, and we got sort of a VIP three and a half hour tour, and I interviewed miners that were down there, and took pictures, and sounds and smells, and it was fabulous, and I really, you know, till we're down in the mine, I don't feel that we can be part of telling the right story of the mine, so it was just an incredible experience, and we're grateful to American Rock Salt, so let us do that. So we're working in tandem with American Rock Salt, with the building project, with Bucie handling, and with the exhibit, and in that process, besides knowing what objects we want to use, we'll also be doing more fundraising, including salt mine tours, as well, if that's your thing. Our board president said you can pay for it when you have a mine, so that may not be for everybody. So we're looking in basements, and we're finding what collections we have, and cleaning up what we've got, there is a mule cart, anybody knows about the history of salt mining, it started with the mules and the pickaxe, and there is one remaining in a field, I can even, it's quite explained, back by the red salt mine, it's large amount, it looks, I'd say it's probably eight and a half feet by four feet, we have, it's just been sitting out there since forever, and we're right now in the process of getting grant funding to conserve that object, and look at it as hopefully the signature piece in that exhibit full of salt and community. We've also been working on another exhibit through some funding and also with our interns, there they are, the club for the county historians office, the new historian, Hannah Watson, and Matt McBrugge, the deputy historian, were amazing, and we're researching the names of the people in that primary source document, and we have funding from local foundations to support that community portion. We still have our influenza pandemic, I guess it's still relevant in our exhibit, we had numbers of how many cases of COVID-19, and we had gigantic numbers, and we just updated it. Didn't realize we were going to do that many numbers in a row, but that's how it goes. Our picture of Geneseo is one of our focal exhibits. And we've been in conversation this last month with the Seneca Nation of Indians as we make some improvements in addition to that. And our interns here are not upset, they just worked on women's fashion in the 1920s in prohibition, nice way to follow influenza and COVID-19. We had our backdoor at first program, which took a break. The history of county was so popular, so popular, we had to turn people away. And because we wanted to adhere to our code enforcement officer policies. And we offered it a second time in each capacity again. So obviously, we're tapping into programming that is meeting the needs of our constituents. And the county's urban office is also collecting storage here. So it's nice to see that people are out about and back inside. When it was COVID, pivoted and did some things outside just to keep people engaged. I had a donor that provided us with a large screen and projection. And we want to do that again, because it's just fun to come out and do a movie on the brain using the brain space. So taking movie preferences now. And then we do a yearly publication. Those that give it a horse community, I know that this is, we had to make more progress in this because especially those who are involved in the horse community were interested in that. I want to congratulate the Livingston County Tourism and Mountain Development. I don't know if they mentioned their $4.5 million Village of Geneseo. And we have put in for some funding, we'll talk later. And I want you to know that we're in conversation with the church, the library, and ourselves to improve how we look at water, you know, water goes down the hill, and how we improve parking in spaces so that people work together and everybody's water is better cared for, and our parking has a better flow. We all share each other's spaces, as you can see from that aerial view. So we want to be good neighbors in that process, too. So in conclusion, we are a part of your tourism in the region, and we really want to keep that good job that we're doing, preserving the past. We've really come to life in the last, you know, decade or so, and I think our momentum is strong. We want to continue to work with our other historical societies, we'll break from that, but other historical societies working together, lots of us have similar needs and experiences. And continue the job we're doing. If you ever want a tour, we can give it to you at any time, just make an appointment. And thank you for the opportunity to let you know what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue on with the agenda. We have several items in the agenda. Do you want to please?
Reclaiming the week of May 15 through the 20th, 2023, as Nursing Home Week in Livingston County in celebration of Older Americans Month. Reclaiming the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Month. Reclaiming the week of May 6 through the 12th, 2023 as National Nurses Week. Appointing members to the Alternatives to Incarceration Advisory Board, Honorable David Provo, Honorable Jennifer Noto, Erin Galvin, and Kristen Fisher. Appointing member to the Livingston County Planning Board, Donald R. Wilkamp. Appointing members to the Livingston County Traffic Safety Board, Ronald Beach III and Steven Mingus. Reclaiming the week of May 8 through the 12th, 2023 as National Economic Development Week in Livingston County. Reclaiming the week of May 7 through the 13th, 2023 as Livingston County Travel and Tourism Week. Reclaiming the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Declaring surplus property, office for the aging, and establishing the standard workday.
Is there any discussion on any of these resolutions? Here and now, I would for motion, and I have to bring to your vote. Does Alvin make his motion?
Lester, second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Host, it's carried out. Will I use resolution to speak yourself?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted.
Next, there's some resolutions that are going to require a separate.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation. Genesee Valley, Vosie.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this contract?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health. Liberty Resources Psychology Physical Occupational Speech Therapy, PLLC. Nicholas H. Noyes Memorial Hospital, and R. Mark Hilton, Speech Pathology Services, PC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health. New York State Department of Health, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for paratransit services for children with disability for Genesee, Orleans, and Livingston Counties. New York State ARC, Inc., Genesee, Livingston, Orleans, Wyoming Counties, Chapter Doing Businesses, Arc Club.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Social Services. Christopher Dihaun, PhD, Genesee, Livingston, Orleans, Wyoming Counties, Chapter, New York State ARC, Inc. Hillside Children's Center, John B. Brennec, also known as Brennec Counseling Services, Language Services Associates, Inc., and various residential treatment centers.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the commissioner of the Livingston County Department of Social Services to sign the following contract, donated funds agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing a license agreement with Veteran One Stop Center of Western New York.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions on this license agreement?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Mr. Demming, awarding bid for central services for air purification materials and core vetland services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following pilot agreement for Livingston County Dimension Renewable Energy.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this pilot agreement?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Awarding bid for the Office of Emergency Management for purchase, installation, and maintenance of aftermarket vehicle equipment for a 2022 Chevrolet 2500 pickup truck. 1075 emergency vehicles.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Office of Emergency Management. WHP Training Towers.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns or questions on this contract?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing submission of an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historical Preservation for the snowmobile trails grant and aid program.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department. Caladonia Trailblazers and Hill and Valley Riders.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Probation Department. Alcohol Monitoring Systems, Inc.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage.
All right, sorry.
Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Public Defender, Legal Server.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this contract?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for the Glow Region Solid Waste Management Committee for the 2023 Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program. Environmental Enterprises, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Mr. Knapp, rescinding resolution number 2022-300. It's 2022 retirement reporting.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Establishing standard workday and retirement reporting credit.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caladonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage. Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Amending the 2023 Livingston County Budget, Department of Health and Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Any questions on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Approving apportionment of mortgage tax receipts for the period of October 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this portion?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Amending a portion of resolution number 2022-422, adopting the 2023 miscellaneous pay rates, Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Amending the 2023 Livingston County Salary Schedule, Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. Authorizing the purchase of one new 2023 Ford Deamer Type 3 ambulance for the Livingston County Emergency Medical Services Department, Northeastern Rescue Vehicles, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Is there any questions or discussion on this purchase?
Evan, Caledonia, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Livonia, Mount Morris, North Anvil, Nunde, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, West Sparda, York. Ayes 4265, absent 789, adopted. The appointment's to the GLOW Workforce Development Board, Janet Olivieri. She's being appointed as private sector business and her term expires on 6/20/25.
Thank you. Ian, do you have any updates for the board this afternoon?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. The first is on behalf of Sycamore Lock and the Office for the Aging Staff, I want to thank you for the support and the attendance at Senior Am. I thought it was a great event again, another year, been a couple of years now that we use that particular site and that service provider for the hearing. And I think it's worked out really well. So thank you all for your support and attendance for that. We did have a visit this week from Senator Schumer, so we did some press on that, as did Senator Schumer. So they were here to announce sort of the kickoff to the already funded Reconnect project from really a couple of years ago now. We were maybe hoping that we might find some other news, but we're sort of still waiting on the next round of funding, which is Reconnect 4. So we have some, you know, high hopes that we might get some additional federal funding for our broadband initiatives. Big budget pass, just two items of note. There's lots of different things in the state budget, of course. Two items that we're tracking potentially from like a legal, like a legality perspective is the undoing of the Western Region Off-Track Betting Corporation, WROTB, is, was undone and the members were terminated and the governance body was changed and the way to voting structure was changed via an amendment to the state budget language in the bill as opposed to a standalone bill. So a lot of the counties are talking about what potentially we can do. The other thing that was troubling is that EFMAP, which is the Enhanced Federal Medicaid Assistance Program, that federal funding that was supposed to flow from the feds to the state to the counties. And the intention of Congress was for it to flow from the feds to the state to the counties. It's now going to get stuck with the state and they're going to keep it, although they spread that out over a couple of years. So that was troubling as well. And just one more thing, longtime 36-plus-year member of the county workforce and for the most recent time, the director of nursing at the CNR, Kathy Cry, is retiring. And there's an event at the CNR, if you're able to make it, 2 o'clock-ish on the Hill at the CNR. So that's this Friday.
Hey, supervisors, do you have any other business for this afternoon?
Move to adjourn and grant you. It's like a western.
You have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, none that's carried out, many say.